Alright, welcome to the town act and plan in board meeting for March twenty first two thousand twenty four six P M. Uh, so I'll stand up for pledge.
Conclusions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll designate Andrew Johnson for an ultimate tonight. For that, you guys got a chance in a couple of minutes.
I make a motion to accept the uh February fifteenth minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright. First up tonight is Ronald Bujie, one tw- two nine six, West Shore Drive, tax map one two one lot zero two six, application for greatest practical extent.
Good evening. Been a while since I've seen everyone. Alright, I'm sure everyone has maps out, so good evening, Joe Stanley with line parole and surveying along Jeff Denly who who works with our team that helped prepare some of the application for tonight's meeting. In brief, we're here representing Mister Ronald Bujie who has a camp lot on West Shore Drive on Square Pond. There's currently a camp situated down down near the water on the property and it's fairly old camp and Mister Bujie is is proposing to to move the building back a bit and enlarge it up to a thirty percent expansion. The current building is situated about seventeen and a half feet away from the water. Um, we are proposing moving it back about that same amount to to just under thirty five feet, thirty four point seven feet is what we show there. And then kind of squaring it up, um, this is one of the many lots on West Shore Drive that has a fair amount of pitch, um, fair amount of slope, a kind of driveway down towards the water. So we are um, we're proposing sort of rotating the building a little bit and squaring it up with an existing retaining wall that's there. Just kind of make use of the existing driveway as it's now situated and then um you know beyond that, uh we feel like it's pretty straightforward, we do depict the different trees on the property and we have submitted um, point counts and things to to Jason, but the current location, the the change of you know, we're we're proposing the greatest practical extent, we uh, we'd impact six or seven trees somewhere in that frame, there's three that fall within the footprint we were proposing, but there's a couple that would be quite close to the walls as well. The only other thing I think is of note is um based upon our thirty percent expansion, um, to maintain our twenty percent lot coverage number, we will have to do a little bit of revegetation, we're proposing revegetating kind of an existing parking area that's up top, a gravel parking area that's really not used much by my client anymore to to um take care of that sort of impervious surface area and give the numbers where they need to be, which are displayed down here in the little red.
You guys also can see the easement um setback for the utility line, the power lines?
Yes.
Right in the middle of that parking area, there's a utility with the power lines, I'll write through it, so he is um outlining that.
Is there a subject system that's gonna be added to this?
Yes, um, they're proposing a system, I do not have the copy of that design, but they're proposing a new system to be installed in that in that driveway area, you know, some sort of chamber system.
It's in the it's in the packet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's on there.
There is one in the packet.
Apologies on that answer, you see Jeff, that's why I have him here tonight.
So the old camp is gonna be demolished?
Correct, and so what we're proposing is rotating a little bit, and then Jason has put up a good picture there, we're we're proposing backing the building up to that retaining wall that you see there to sort of take it, you know, it's a furthest back, we felt like we could push it without a major disturbance and without you know, the driveway is already very tight for a vehicle to turn around and we're trying not to strength that ability to turn around and get back up the hill any anymore, so that's the you know, in our opinion, that was the greatest practical extent to move this particular building back, but yes, this would be tear torn down and moved back seventeen feet to to kind of line up with that retaining wall in that picture.
Uh, Jason, whenever, you can probably answer this, but is uh, what's the exception with respect to the hundred foot water setback?
What is the?
Yeah, the exact like like building in uh ahead of the a hundred foot water setback.
So you 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 are restricted to your thirty percent expansion uh by square footage and volume, uh whichever comes first, uh other than that, it's
But like a new build?
New build, anything within a hundred, uh you can't just build, you you're restricted, so you take whatever your footprint is right now for and then you multiply it by thirty percent and that's what you're allowed to do within the hundred.
Within within the hundred, okay.
Within the hundred, yeah, and it's your job to put them the greatest practical extent, what makes the most sense, how far can you get them either behind a hundred or as close to the hundred um without impacting too much?
Right.
So, right now you've got steep conditions, you've got power lines, you have a road setback that you can't infringe on, um, which is a fifty foot from the center line. Uh, so there's there's a lot of things that you've taken consideration with this one, um, the trees, how many trees are you gonna take out to go that keep on going further back?
Yep. Yeah.
All that stuff, so it's it's the boards, that's, you know, you you try to look at the whole scope of the thing and um, if you guys aren't confident, like, so I always ask people to provide us with as many photos as possible, sometimes you can bypass a sidewalk, sometimes a sidewalk is is warranted.
Yep.
It's up to you guys to decide if you want a sidewalk or not, we had do have some pretty good photos on this, I have been on the site, I've walked it, it is a, it has a pretty good pitch to it. And I mean, it has very uh that utility really messes that whole lot up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so uh
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to round my mind around the statute itself.
Yeah, yeah, it's greatest practical extent, anything with any structure within a hundred feet of the water, it has, your your job is to try to get it as far back as you can
Yeah.
within within reason.
Yeah.
And part of what you'll note there is where the dimensions on the building we're proposing are sort of on twenty six feet wide by thirty two and a half feet long.
Right.
That is our limiting factor, we can't go another square foot, we meet Jason's requirement of not expanding it more than thirty percent, which lends to
Sure.
people wanting every square foot they can get without aggravating him, so thirty two and a half foot structure is, you know, most of us would
Yeah, absolutely.
you know, knock that down to thirty or thirty two, but in these instances where I can get as I can get, you know, we we um crunch the numbers and sometimes people want that extra half a foot, which is what the rules he's talking about are what led to that particular size um of the footprint we're proposing.
If you guys want me to scroll through the photos anymore, then just feel free to mention it, because there's a handful of photos on there that they have been taking to try to do their best to show the property. Um, so Yes, I'll go right up to the top again, so here's your lake view, um. Um, that's that shows the pitch, the retaining wall, I can't, for some reason I can't zoom in on this and the retaining wall is right up in here.
Right, so that's, that's where the existing building sits and we're proposing, you know, in our opinion, the greatest practical extent, we're proposing sliding it up against this retaining wall area, which you can kind of see here.
That's looking down from that top of that retaining wall with the top of the existing cap.
Where are the majority of the trees coming up, Joe?
Right here, he's
He's there.
He's right in this area.
Yeah, the ones just below the wall.
Oh, you guys can't see my notes on there, sorry.
It says twelve here, four, seven, and one. Is that an application?
Yeah, that's us counting points based on the size of ground, um, so it's not
It says no.
I have a
Okay.
You you have, on the back, last page of your packet, you actually have the proposed tree.
It says uh four, seven, and one, so
Yeah, so there is twelve trees, yeah.
So I'm just wondering where are where are they, Joe?
Probably some here.
Right, there's kind of, there's kind of a three that land here and then there's, you know, you have these ones tucked up against the side that are impacted and then there's actually a few growing up through the driveway.
Twelve, three, septa, okay.
That. That, yeah, so between the septa, no, it's all, it's all right here in this cluster as we're
Nothing in the front. Thanks.
Um, Denly, do you know where the water supply is on this one?
I, I don't. There was no, we just, it must be pumped out of the lake, cause we, we need to find a well where we can, the uh
I'll just
I I've walked inside this place, I actually think I wanted to I don't even know, I don't even know, I didn't get that far. Um, if you look on the second point, it might show, it might reference one.
Yes, it only uh references the others, draw well.
So then they're re- they like like um Mister Denly said back there, it might just be pulled from the
There was, in the basement of, or the basement, but in the crawl space, there's an old uh tank, like a pressure tank and an old well pump, doesn't look like it's been used about twenty years, so I don't know where that goes to.
Are they planning on putting in a draw well or?
Yes.
Um, question, what are they revegetating with, are they going with the shrubs, are they going with the lawn, what is the plan?
Um, generally, we propose uh doing like an erosion control mold with, you know, erosion competitive bushes, a lot of times people choose blueberry bushes, if you got acres and you need to get a bit of it, I don't believe, I have proposed anything specific on the map. We're also looking to um the board might want to see there, but generally that's um, we let the buyers know that that lawn isn't usually an option work for, we'd like to see and it's generally a lot of the uptake and it's erosion controlled type mold, smolt area with um that lower vegetation.
That'll have to be done prior to occupancy and that's, you know
I just see one little area of vegetation that's a lot to do.
Yeah, that's a part, yeah. And that's just because he's trying to bring the cow, the down a little bit. What did you have it at, Joe, it's it's at twenty four and you're gonna, it's going down a little bit or?
Uh, it's at twenty four point eight and we're trying to maintain the existing twenty four point eight, you know, so that's, we're trying to offset the expansion of the building, the square footage and uh the disturbance up there, uh for that lot coverage number.
Does this pin actually not reach the road, how does that work? His his rock line, you know, is that just the easement, the, should I show the easement?
Right, the original good old survey of the road and which is the right of way, which is what we dimensioned off, is sits over here, you know, where they built the road, it's not in the right of way, which is very common up in that West Shore Drive and ordinance instructs us to go from the center of the right of way, so it depends on where you're at on the road, but often, in this case, the people on this side of the road would very much benefit from that construction and the, and or feel like they benefited from it versus in this direction. But the, yeah, the center of the right of way is actually the end of the pavement there.
Is there any reason why he can't just revegetate that whole section of his property?
What's out up here?
Yeah, just that little center.
I I don't see any reason why he couldn't, I just usually propose the minimum, but if that's something that would make yourself or the board happy, you have a little more low and see, it's not gonna be difficult, we're already up there doing that.
Well, we always try to get close to twenty.
Yeah.
You know, you know, trying, you you want your, try to get it to twenty, but you know.
Yeah.
That's not gonna make it twenty, but it might bring it down to twenty four.
Yeah, yeah, twenty four, twenty three, something like that, so I haven't asked my client yet, I'm absolutely sure that's not an issue.
What is the, you guys have the distance from the water um that he's proposing?
Yep, it's thirty four point seven.
Alright.
Yep. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for a greatest practical extent for Ronald Bujie on map one twenty one lot oh twenty six. Um, with the condition that the uh upper left hand area, um, that that entire area will be uh revegetated.
And no closer than?
And and no closer than thirty four point seven feet to the waterline.
A second.
All in favor? All opposed? One second.
Thank you all very much.
This was our one together.
We'll still take anything, but even in the future, I mean, I'll do a different color for
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, that's more red.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next up, Michael Mason, one four three Seventh Street, tax map one five one lot zero zero nine, application for greatest practical extent.
Hello, I am not Michael Mason. And Joe's making me look bad because I don't have an easel.
Do now.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, so my name is Kendra Ramzel, I'm a civilian here and um project manager with Sabejo Technics. Uh, full disclosure, um, Sabejo did not prepare the application, uh, Michael Mason did, um, but I'm here as a friend and I just happen to have the background uh and knowledge to hopefully be able to present the plan and answer your questions. Um, so we are located at one forty three Seventh Street, um, this is a very similar lot to what was just described actually, um, it's on Lower Melsom. And unfortunately, at the end of last year, potentially beginning of this year, um, the existing structure uh burned. So, um, we are proposing a new structure with a thirty percent volume increase, um, and we are setting it back further away from the lake. Again, similar to the last project that was presented, um, just about as far back as we can go. Um, and so we've pre- we've uh submitted a building permit as well as calculations for the thirty percent expansion of the building. Um, the building will now have a dignity for, it had a crawl space underneath, um, it was two stories, the existing building, um, but we're now proposing a new structure with a walkout basement. Um, we're trying to take advantage of the the sloping, the natural slope to the land, it does run down pretty steeply from Seventh Street uh down to the lake. So, um, we're trying to kind of push the house back into the land and minimize disturbance, um, but get him that that volume increase that he's looking for. We have also submitted an N R P A permit as we are within seventy five feet of the lake, um, and so that is pending, but it's usually a a two week um approval process that's kind of automatic with a with a simple permit like this.
So in two thousand and, oh, seventeen? In this packet, I did, they did, uh, the previous owner did come in for greatest practical extent. Um, so you do have the old minutes in here that this was approved already at, uh, I think you guys are asking for pretty much the same location, uh, twenty two uh, excuse me, forty feet, right around forty feet from the scrolling?
Yeah, I believe they they got that approved and then just never constructed it, so there were, there were building plans, um, and a site plan, I'm assuming, but that were approved, but uh they unfortunately burned in the fire, so we um started over from square one.
So this is the situation I was telling you about, so they, back in um, whenever it was, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they came in for the building permit, they never he, they went through the whole process and thing, but he never came in and and actually um pulled, paid for the permit, never never followed through with the whole thing, backed off the build. Um, in our ordinance, it states that if you do not obtain your building permit um within a certain timeframe, uh eighteen months, um, you lose those conditions that were granted by the planning board. So they're just pretty much coming in and asking for, you know, reapproved the conditions, so that they can rebuild.
Jason, I can't read it on here, but what is the distance it is from the from the water?
The existing was thirteen point six feet and the proposed is fifty point three.
Fifty point three?
Yes, for the structure, the patio is a little, obviously a little bit closer, that's forty two point eight feet.
Yeah, so forty two point eight is the number you go with?
Yep.
Sorry, that's
And is there any trees or anything like that that are gonna need to come down?
Um, a couple of trees did burn, um, and were considered uh toast, uh if you will.
Yep.
This this photo is
Feeling honey this evening apparently, um, so those those came down, uh, when they did the demolition of the the structure that burned, the remainder of the structure.
I didn't get the photos.
Here again? You didn't get the photos?
No.
Nope? Give me a second. There you go, now you got the photos, that's the back of the camp from the driveway.
Yeah, that's just an aerial photo.
That
I believe this was the camp that was burned.
And I do believe the lot starts, after this, it starts to climb up, so there's a septic rig in here somewheres, and then after that, the lot, the lot does start to climb.
Yeah, the bottom of the driveway, kind of parking area, um, is relatively flat, probably like one percent, I would say, and then um, it slopes up pretty consistently to a kind of another flat area at the top, another flat paved area. Which that provides um access to the that portable shelter that he's got shown up in there.
You go ahead.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the application for Michael Mason for greatest practical extent, uh, for map one fifty one lot zero zero nine, um, with the condition that the uh main building be no closer than fifty point three feet to the waterline and the proposed patio forty two point eight feet.
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed?
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Alright, next up, Jean Cherkov, ten Liptondale Road, tax map one one two lot zero four two, application for greatest practical extent.
Right, um, I have a similar situation, uh, we were, I was here a year and a half ago or so and you guys gave a the okay for the setback of forty seven point five feet and through one set of circumstances and another, we did not, we weren't able to initiate this project, so now we're ready to roll. And um, I guess we may remove that, and I have, you know, I don't have a big poster, but I do have a picture of it, but I haven't been able to see that, so
They have it too.
Oh, you have it up there?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, you know, they're kind of, with the nickels down.
Um
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this is a very, very tricky lock to deal, for them to deal with, um, she came in, at one point, they were, they wanted to go back further, but then it was gonna be, it was gonna cause more
Yeah.
uh, impact, so then she asked to go back, it was like fifty two, and then she wanted to come back to like forty seven, and you guys approved that, it was like two and a half years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we were trying to get that one corner to
Yeah, 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 so we've got it now, boy, um, by all manner
Yeah, she had, she had troubles with the contractors and the 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 design and now she's got it narrowed down, but
Yeah. Yeah, we're ready to start.
More of another formality, just trying to get it reapproved.
Yeah.
I remember this one, I think it's pretty much, yeah, I remember this one.
Yeah. It's it's got its advantages, but it's got its disadvantages.
Do you remember it?
Yep, I remember it.
Remember it?
Uh, make a motion that we accept the application of Jean, I'm sorry.
Cherkov.
Cherkov. Um, map one twelve lot forty two, um, for the greatest prac- practical extent, um I don't know, how close to the water?
There's a, there's a minutes in there.
Forty seven.
Forty seven point five.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Uh, with the condition that the building be no closer than forty seven feet to the water.
Look closer than forty seven five or forty, forty four point seven?
No, not closer than forty seven.
The first one is uh
Forty seven.
Forty seven.
Forty seven.
Yeah, forty seven point five is the
The narrow minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty seven.
Just reading.
Seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good luck, please, I won't have to do this again.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alright, no pending projects. She's in twelfth and White, uh, motion, this is gonna start.
Make a motion that we, uh, what?
One.
Second.
All in favor?